I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present with the exception of Matthew Rousley. Okay, let's take a look at the agenda and get the housekeeping over with.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes for the last meeting, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. They are attached to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the ten eleven, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, no public comment here. Do we have any reports from the administration?
No, I can do a report later on another step.
Okay. So you're good. Okay, we don't have a public hearing. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, uh, we're gonna talk about the Public Participation Plan for the Comprehensive Plan update.
Okay, um, so that is me. And I'm gonna pass out a bunch of stuff, starting with the Public Participation Plan. Which is on a seven-page memo format, um, and then I'll do a little briefing here. As part of our grant for the Growth Management Acts periodic update of Tenino's Comp Plan, one of the first deliverables is the Public Participation Plan, and so you're seeing kind of a draft of what that would look like and head off to for Commerce's requirement. So you can just kind of glance through that. I'll brief that on the slide deck, um, and I'll hand that out as well, and that's on the screen for anyone online. Are you showing anybody online, Courtney?
No.
Okay. They should be stapled. Um, so some of this is gonna be a little bit repetitive because you've all been paying attention for the last six months and we've been talking about uh, the impending Comp Plan update, and so, um, we are starting off here on, on, on the second slide. The update is required by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. I, I will, I will mention that because Tenino's a slower-growing city and because of our size, we actually have an additional extension on that of another year. Um, we're not gonna propose to use that primarily because, the longer we work on stuff, the more money it costs and, and there's not necessarily a ton of benefit, so we have that if we need it, if something else comes up. Um, particularly the climate resilience piece might, might, uh, result in a bit of a, um, a schedule kind of impact, but we can pass this one out too. This is my last handout. So, we're gonna shoot for June twenty, uh, twenty-five, June thirtieth. You'll notice there, and, and I'll get to this in the, in a second, we're gonna, we're gonna outline all those efforts, but predominantly two thousand twenty-five will be Planning Commission and City Council review and adoption of, of the Comp Plan. There's nine elements that are required by the Growth Management Act. There's a handful of those that you don't have in your Comp Plan. Um, there's an economic development element that's needed, a Parks and Rec element that is suggested, and, um, as I briefed in October, a climate resilience element that we'll add. So I wanna ask you a little bit, just kind of park that economic development and Parks and Rec element, um, but I wanna come back to that as far as how hard to chase after those two pieces. We are gonna coordinate with Thurston County and other agencies and, um, include the community in the conversation. There is gonna be an update, a kind of a commiserate update to the development, um, code. If you remember from a couple of years back, the, the kind of one-on-one briefings that I've done on Growth Management Act, um, the Comprehensive Plan's a policy document, and it doesn't really do anything. It, I mean, it suggests a lot of things and says we should, and we, you know, we aspire to and we believe, but the rubber that meets the road is in the development regulations and the budget. Um, and, and also the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program and the CIP. So basically, however you spend money and however you regulate, that's actually how you're implementing your Comprehensive Plan. Um, and so, the, as part of the Comp Plan update is a, is a refresh and revision to the development regs. I actually think, uh, well, I'll ask you, but I mean, there's, there's a, a lot of value in going to the community and asking uh, on a check on the vision, and we'll get to that in a second, um, but perhaps the bulk of the implementation will come with the development regulation review and, and revisions. So, as far as a daily impact on somebody who's living in Tenino and, and, and has a business in Tenino or driving through Tenino, those regulations are probably what they would be, um, uh, as impactful to them as a, as a vision document. Um, so we're gonna spend the rest of this year, uh, wrapping up on the Public Participation Plan that you have in front of you. We are endeavoring to kind of evaluate the community profile and vision in December and also work through the GMA checklist uh, for the update. Um, the kind, Commerce puts out kind of a, a checklist that has, it's a, it's a several, I don't know, fifteen sheets or something like that, fifteen pages worth of uh, spreadsheets that talk about most, uh, most recently updated law and new legislation and where to look for in your Comp Plan if you've addressed that. Because the Comprehensive Plan has to be consistent with the current state law when it's adopted in two thousand twenty-five or thereabouts. So they've, they've kind of done a lot of the work for us, so we don't have to hire an attorney to go look through the the RCWs and the WACs to figure out what we need to do, uh, to make our Comp Plan consistent. They've already, you know, they've already provided that. So that's what that action is, their GMA checklist, so it's sort of like a assessment of our plan to what is required. Um, and then we're gonna kind of break down, like, about every month, we're gonna try to roll through a new section, um, of the Comprehensive Plan. The land use piece, some of these might kind of slide over, but I think our intent is to brief you on these each month. So that's, you see on the green column on the left, that's kind of the point of this slide, is where, where are you headed and what are you gonna be doing? So, there's gonna be a lot of Comp Plan over the next year. Buckle up. Any questions on that, that slide? Alright, so the framework of the public engagement is, is as you'd kind of expect. There's really three major venues. The Planning Commission is the primary entity for, uh, ongoing meetings and public input, so if someone wants to ask questions about it, they can come in. They don't have to, they could ask housing questions in the transportation meeting, they could ask transportation questions in the land use element. It's not, it's not limited. It's not a public hearing per se, it's kind of an open, open process. We, we may, I, I mean, I, I leave it to the discretion of the chair in the group, but we may wanna meet down on the, on the floor around a table and just kind of workshop some of this, that's kind of the intent. And if the public wants to join in on, you know, their ideas, I think, uh, we could certainly accommodate that. We are gonna do some kind of more outward-facing efforts like, um, a survey and some open houses to, to talk through uh, goal development and, and review the draft plan, and the website, insofar as it is working, will be, uh, will, will be posted, like, our major deliverables on there. It's currently down right now, I think it's still down, right? Courtney, is the website still down? Any questions on that?
So as far as outreach goes, that's where, I know that we had talked about possibly doing, like, inserts and Yeah. city, you know, like, utility billers and stuff. We could look at those things as well.
Yeah, and I think I have a, a series of survey topics at, like, slide eight, so I'll definitely, if I don't remember that, you can remind me.
Perfect.
Um, on slide five here, the draft objectives are informing residents about the update, you know, kind of saying, hey, now this thing is happening, collaborate and exchange ideas, include a range of perspectives. A lot of the engagement efforts that are coming out of the state are very focused, uh, as you would expect, on diversity, equity, and inclusion, so we're, we're wanting to make sure that people who may not have had an opportunity to participate in the past have that opportunity, and we're reaching out to them and providing them a comfortable method, uh, in order to give, uh, feedback. So increase that access- accessibility to the process. Part of that is that transparency about what, when we're doing what and, and where, and that is why the schedules, the first, and the Public Participation Plan are the first things you develop. So we, we'll put that on the website and kind of, um, make it, make it as well-known as we can. And finally, build some support amongst the people, um, for the plan itself. So the primary request of you today is, is there anything you'd add or change on this list? Any adjustments, um, any suggestions?
Yeah, it always seems like when we do any kind of stuff like this, you get somebody says, oh, I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know, you know? But, uh, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to reach out to people that we know in the town and put it on, you know? People that we know that may be interested, you know? Let them know also, besides just having it on our website, because, yeah. I think that's just a good way to reach out to people. They get something from me, that, and they know me, that something's going on. I think it just makes them feel like there's some personal outreach to them to, uh, get involved in.
And my thought would be, like, in the, uh, in the eyes of transparency, would it ever be a good idea to send a notice to the Chamber of Commerce notifying them that this is happening? Do a post on Tenino Talk, notify that this is happening, right? And then we're going to them, we're letting them know that it's occurring, and then if anyone comes back and says, well, I never knew about it, well, we're so sorry that happened, these are the avenues we did to reach out to the community. But, but it would just, I don't know. Anything that we can do for, like, transparency to try to get the message out there, um, I think will help us in the long run.
I feel when it comes to social media, having, like, if the city can provide something that they put out that shares on multiple different websites, that I know that other than just Tenino Talk, I hear there's, like, other versions and other sites, um, to make it more formal.
Totally.
So, uh, actually, related to both of those comments, on the next slide is, um, who are the audiences? And so here's a list of the audiences, the general public, elected and appointed officials at the city, and, um, non-city service providers like the Fire District, um, Rural Transit, Thurston County PUD, et cetera, others. So, like, PSE would be on there as well. Non-governmental organizations like the, like the Chamber, um, and others as interested, and then state, regional, tribal, and other agencies, including TRPC, Thurston County, the Tribes, um, and, um, Thurston Economic Development Council.
Uh, maybe Puget Sound Energy, since we're talking about energy, it might be a good one.
Yep.
Just to let them know that we're kind of gonna be talking about some of that stuff.
And so I wrote down, uh, utility billers, uh, as well on this list. Um, and then also, I've got Tenino Talk and the social media posts, be aware of that. Other, other thoughts on this? Who else to reach out to?
Is, like, the school?
Yeah, school districts, uh, good one, right? That should be on that list.
What about sending pamphlets out through, like, the water bill? I know I receive stuff about Tenino Art Festival and the market through the water bill.
What do you think, so, yeah, we'd, we'd definitely, I, we've had good success. Mostly what we've done in that regard is have an insert in the utility bills uh, that have a URL or, um, QR code to a survey. So we can talk about that in a minute, but that, that's what I would suggest. Cause if you just put a pa- something passive in there, like, hey, we're updating the Comp Plan, it's like, you know, off it goes. Now, you know, you're playing defense a little bit and do, doing the transparency thing, and when someone comes back, you, you know, a month later and says, no one ever told me, it's like, well, do you, do you pay your bill? Cause, you know, it's in there. So, we've done, you know, we've had, we've had better success with, um, using the utility billers as a link to a survey. Because, and I'll, I'll talk, I don't wanna steal my thunder, but we'll talk about that on the next slide, about how I like to do surveys, how SCJ does surveys. Any other thoughts on this? Uh, how would you, how would you?
Maybe the library too.
Library? How would you like to reach out to the school district? Let's talk about that for a little bit.
I mean, uh, we could contact, uh, the district office and they have, the district secretary can put something out to, you know, over their internal email, you know, to all the students, although, I mean, even if, I guess you would still have a stake, even if you don't live in the city, uh, if your kids attend the school, obviously. So it has an impact on you, so.
The, uh, council has a representative of the school district also, that, that should be attending meetings that could also relay, in, in person could really, should be able to relay information.
So I guess I, when I kind of heard notify the, the school district, I was more thinking, like, the entity of the school district, so, like, the superintendent and then the elected
That's what I mean.
board members? Okay.
But they can disseminate the information.
If they want, absolutely. I, I hadn't really thought about utilizing them, so, to get to the individuals.
Yeah, what, um, app or platform do they use to notify parents of stuff?
So they have, like, Class Dojo, which is just an app, but that's per, per teacher. Uh, other than that, if it's, like, school-wide for any, any grade, it's an email.
What, what do they do?
So they just go to parents.
We, we use it for our Friends of Tenino Parks for the Earth Day celebration, and we send it to the district secretary, and she puts it out to all of the students, all the parents who are signed up. It's like Skyward or something, maybe.
That's, that's right. That's, that's what I was gonna ask.
But, but they have to do it, you can't do it, so.
Yeah.
Right, so when there's a school closure because of weather, where, how does that email go out?
Phone calls, emails, there's a, you can sign it, each parent can sign up for different options, how they wanna get notified.
Text messages typically from the bus transportation place, as well as the school.
Okay. Uh, I heard, I heard, anything else on schools? I, I was thinking particularly not just a passive notification, uh, but more maybe targeted to class, to kids, instead of just the parents. Cause that stuff that we talked about, internal emails and texts and stuff like that, that's gonna go to the parents. I have three kids in school, so I get, you know, like, four or five emails a day from, you know, school, um.
Maybe if there's a, is there a government class or political science class?
Yeah.
Or is there, we, we could contact, like, the ASB, and they could, I mean, would they be able to send something out to the student body if we're trying to get it?
So let's, let me see, is it on this one? Yeah, let's go to the next slide, and, and, cause this, this kind of gets at what I'm talking about. We've got, like, four levels here of, of community engagement. It's inform, consult, involve, or collaborate. So inform is, like, present the information. Consult means asking for input on a certain issue. Involve means, like, help us define whatever the issues are with your input. Or collaborate is, like, working arm-in-arm to decide how to go about these things. So, we're talking right now about informing, and that's perfectly good, but it's fairly passive and it's fairly one-sided. What, what suggestions do you have for consulting or involving with the kids?
Well, I like the call to action with, like, uh, like a survey or something, cause that would be a consult.
Well, I know that the school board has, like, a student representative that is appointed every year, so, like, even if we contact the school board and, like, let them know, and then they, like, either pass it out, or if the school board themselves has thoughts, again, I guess that kind of includes students too.
There is a student rep on there, so, yeah, if we talk to, if somebody talked to the board, the student rep should be there to, and we could, you know, make sure we make that as part of the presentation, that they understand that we want involvement from
So, and so I guess
from our youth.
Right, and so I, I think then that, then the important thing is that when we take that message to them, we have to package it in a way where we communicate our hoped, uh, response. Does that make sense? Otherwise, they might look at it and go, we're the school board, we make the decisions, okay, yeah, great. But if we are hoping to get student involvement, we have to somehow explain, you know, we're hoping to get student invol- you know, we have to somehow let them know what we're looking for.
Right.
To get the best outcome.
And, and instead of just saying, hey, we're doing this Comp Plan update, say what it means, so people, cause I think if somebody says, hey, we're doing a Comp Plan update, people what does that mean, you know?
Right.
So explaining, uh, when we talk, we do these things, to, explain how it impacts people and what a big deal it is, so they know.
So that kind of goes for any organization then, right? Like, I mean, if we, when we commute, when we, uh, send out a notice to the Chamber of Commerce, we might wanna lead, we'll probably wanna lead with some sort of call to action, right? Like, with a survey or, you know, I mean, just again, kind of like letting them know what we're hoping to get back so that we get better results.
What would be a different call to action other than a survey, or what would be a different example of a consult that's not a survey? Cause we can disseminate the QR code to the survey in all these ways and try and hit everybody and send it to, through the school board and have them say, like, have your kid fill out the survey, you know, I mean, uh, and some will do and some won't, but that's gonna happen no matter what. So what's a different example of a consult?
So there's, you know, there's, um, another example that I've used, uh, in McCleary, which is, um, similarly sized to, to Tenino, um, was, we, we connected with a government, uh, uh, or, or history teacher. In, in McCleary, they have a, they have a single building for, for school for K through eight, and if you're in middle school or if you're in high school, you go through, um, you go to the high school in, in Elmo. So there's no high, you know, there's no high schoolers in, in, in that building, it's just K through eight. So we, we found an eighth-grade teacher who was willing to let us use a class, and I came in and I briefed what the, what planning is all about. And then I asked them, um, a series of diff- through a series of different exercises, we went through, like, what do you want your, what do you, what do you love about your town, what bo- bugs you about your town, and what would it take to get you to move back here once you move away for whatever? You know, if you were to move away, or if you go to college, or you find a job, you know, what are the things that would, you would be looking for to keep you here? For me and my profession, that was really fulfilling. I, I, I enjoyed that. Now, it took a lot of work.
Especially younger.
And, uh, it, it, um, I thought, I thought all of our post-processing of that information was really rich. I thought the feedback we got from the kids was as insightful, if not a little bit more than the, than the general population. I don't know if you know McCleary very well, they have a bear festival, which is, uh, they, supposedly they're eating bear stew, like, with bear meat, that was the old, I don't know if they're still doing that, but it's a big, it's a big festival, kind of like, you know, like yeah, what you guys have, have here, um, and it's in the summer. And, uh, we, we had a booth out for that festival, for the bear festival, and we took feedback, and I thought the feedback from the kids that one day was as good as the feedback we got from the adults. So, um, we could do that. I think there's, there's opportunity for that. You can't do it with the fourth-grade class, you know? You have to do it with, you know, sophomores or, you know, mature eighth graders or whatever, and these kids were, you know, you, if you do it the right way, it's pretty cool, like, they, they get, they get excited, and so, here's one thing. Like, the kids told us, like, the power's not very reliable, like, it goes out a lot. And so, you know, like, in, in their context, it's like, you know, so I lose my internet feed, you know, now I, I lose my Fortnite.
Can't game for a couple of hours.
Whatever, right, but, uh, that was another parent's side, you know, they didn't, didn't say anything about that, so they're like, hey, the power's not very reliable.
They're just used to it.
And, um, uh, or, like, I don't always feel safe when I'm walking, cause kids walk a lot more than adults, uh, because they're, especially in that, and here too, cause, you know, you walk to school in a lot of these places, and I'd feel pretty comfortable if I lived here, you know, six or seven blocks away from school, just letting my kids go, right? I don't, I don't know. And so, they said, hey, we'd like, uh, sidewalks, or we'd like some type of separation between us and the, the travelway. So, um, that's an example of what we've done in the past. So instead of just handing someone a paper or saying, take a picture of this QR code and go to the, to the survey, which are very viable, we, we actually kind of like, you know, try to influence them and, like, educate them at the same time. Influence them wi- with the subject matter, not to answer certainly. So, we could, we could try to do something like that.
How long does this, um, the public participation component last, from fall two thousand twenty-four till when?
Well, we, we've got it outlined here, uh, it's kind of throughout, but the way we have the survey set up here on this slide is, uh, December, January, and, um, I would say my, my preference as the, my, my preference working on our side would be to move this thing along at a comfortable pace that, uh, without rushing it, but without, uh, without unnecessary delays. So, if, if you felt that a specific outreach to a whatever tenth-grade economics class, or, you know, a tenth-grade, government class, or even a English class, or whatever class it would be, would be valuable, that would probably bump the schedule a little bit, but I think that that's something that could easily be accommodated. Again, you have almost two years from now, give or take, to, to get this thing adopted. And depending on the, the level of intensity at which we pursue, uh, some of the changes in the Comp Plan, um, and the climate element is a, is a new wrinkle, you know, we talked about last month that we've, we've never done before. The draft guidance isn't even out, so it's still a little bit uncertain. In a difference, in a earlier setting, three years ago, if we'd done a Comp Plan, we could probably do a Comp Plan update in, in Tenino in, like, eight months.
Now, with this outreach on the schedule, uh, you have each month has its own different, um,
Briefing.
kind of briefing and what's going over, does that mean every month you're gonna have a new, new meeting with the school? Are we gonna do something new with that, um, survey that you're gonna send out?
No, so, yeah, that's a good, good question. I think the intent would be that we would do community-wide survey on the front end of a lot of this effort, and while we're collecting that information, we're also doing review of each of these elements with you every month. So, so how that, I believe is gonna work, the tempo of that is we would open up the Comp Plan, we'd show you what the how, the, let's not do housing, cause we just did housing. We'd show you what the capital facility section says. We'd identify the gaps that we need to change, and we would propose new language for how to address those gaps. And that, um, that last part would probably happen later, because the inputs for that new language, the goals, the policies, the objectives, the implementation plan, comes from the survey, from you, from talking to the, to the stakeholders, all of that input, we're not gonna invent. We're gonna pull that from somewhere else. So, the briefings that we have for you are just to, you know, identify where those holes are and what the state is saying, what we should be paying attention to. The, the, um, the follow-up on the content of that would happen, like, in the summer, or like, you know, there, there'd be a little bit, I think, of a lag every single time.
And I remember, you know, one of the things you had said was, as we go through two thousand twenty-four, really any one could come and talk to any topic at any meeting. So, in a way, it's almost just kind of like an open roundtable, kind of ongoing discussion for the year as we're going through this and we're collecting the information?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna say open roundtable, but I'm just saying, like, it's not like, once land use is done, it's, you know, well, I don't know.
I think you'd wanna, uh, I, I know where you're going with that. You, you wanna kind of keep the, your, your, uh, your comment period open, and I think that's accurate. What we wanna be careful about is deciding on something, and we, we, we write it up, and then going back and revising it two months later because someone came up with a different idea. I think there's some flexibility to do that, depending on the extent to which the revisions need to be made.
Totally. Yeah, no, I, what else?
When I work with councils in particular, I, I try to get them to, you know, buy off and give us, you know, closure on an element, so we can keep moving. Because otherwise, you, you writ- you run the risk of getting to the end and having someone vote against the entire document, cause they don't like one piece.
Totally.
So?
Yep.
Does that, does, so, uh, you, we can do, the, the schedule is more just kind of a tempo and an outline of the things we have to cover, as I said at the onset. I think we can be flexible with how you wanna move through that, depending on, like, you could easily say, look, we didn't get through all the land use stuff today. Uh, we, let's, let's extend it, or let's meet in three weeks, you know? I, I think, um, we've got this climate advisory, uh, team that's also meeting, and so there's, you know, there's gonna be additional me- We've got this climate advisory uh team that's also meeting, and so there's, you know, there's gonna be additional meetings going on. And it's the same group of people on my side who are, who are helping with the work, so we don't wanna overdo the meetings, but um. It's a big, it's a big subject, and it deserves, you know, your attention. If you think we need to extend out and push the schedule, we have plenty of room in the schedule to do that. Did that, get at your.
Yes, no, and I, I think I like the idea of staying focused and staying on track. But I also think it's, it's just nice though to know that, like you said, nothing is being finalized. It's, you know, we're. And and, yeah.
We're on the same page, I know, yeah.
Yeah, theoretically, this can be revised through, I mean, the city council has, even when it gets to them, they could re, I mean theoretically revise it, so.
Right.
This goes on for some time and.
Right.
Is open for, if something glaring comes up, it's.
You, you uh, you wanna get some closure because. The, the state law has never settled, this feels like a moving target. And so i- if you. Usually the legislation allows for plans that are like done within a certain timeframe, don't have to be revised with new l- language. Immediately, they'll give you kind of like a win, a grace window or whatever. And they're definitely doing that on the climate stuff for the Puget Sound Regional Council communities. Who've already adopted their comp plan, or about to adopt their comp plan, or they're deeply into it. Because um this climate uh resiliency element is as of May, you know, it's pretty fresh. So they're not saying, stop everything what you're doing and and pivot to climate. They're saying, we're gonna, you need to do these climate things like in three years. I think it's the date, twenty six. So inform, consult, involve, collaborate. Um so mostly what we would be doing is like informing. Uh as far as here's the information, consulting is as far as here's a survey. And the question is, is do we wanna involve, like, to what extent do we wanna involve um? Schools or other, other, is, are there, is there another like group that connecting with? Uh would make a significant impact on perhaps the direction of the comp plan?
I mean, the chamber, I think, obviously, but.
And how many member, how many business mem- uh businesses are in the chamber? Do you have any idea?
I don't know. I guess I would.
Twenty people at the meetings.
Yeah, there's probably like thirty to.
Thirty to forty businesses and like twenty regular attendees?
I would say, yeah. That would be my guess, but.
Alex is gonna look it up.
On the chamber website, there's a business directory, and those are all the members that are current.
Okay. I expect that the community survey will cover these four topics. Uh con- confirming the vision, understanding values and priorities, planning for increased density and middle housing typologies. And understanding infrastructure gaps and priorities. So the question is, is are, are those generally on point? As far as the things we should be seeking input on? Or what is it missing is the more interesting question. This has got a feedback mechanism built into it mo- most of the time, these, these processes do, where you ask people. What, you know, where do you wanna go? And what are your thoughts about how you wanna get there? And then the technical piece on our side comes in about laying out the groundwork and the framework for how we do those things, how we achieve visions and how we get there. And then we say, what do you think? Like, we should, we reflect that back to them and say, here's what we heard you say, here's what we came up with. How closely does this reflect your values, your vision, your goals, your policies? You know, now that you maybe perhaps see like the, the infrastructure gaps.
Yeah, I think depending on the topic that they're talking about, you might get more information than what's on this, that we didn't realize we were missing, or less.
So the chamber site makes you look up by category?
Oh, really?
Each category looks to populate a good number.
I know this is like very, very new part of the survey, but I think it'd be interesting to ask, like. In the question, like how? How likely they saw themselves living in Tenino for more than like five years? Cause I think that would also be interesting to see where the vision of the individuals in the tower.
Or to add to that, you know, do you plan on retiring here, you know, is where you wanna stay? Because I think in one of the packets, we handed out what most of the individuals were younger, but how long did he plan on staying here?
Yeah.
Is a career path gonna take him somewhere else? You know, is, what's their ten-year focus on that? Or once her child graduates, you know, do they plan on staying or do they plan on getting out?
Yeah.
So that's, that's a good idea.
Well, I think that also would help us understand kind of the overall like housing need, cause if it's like. All of these twenty-year-olds are saying that they wanna live here for the next five years, they probably can't buy a house, but they may want more of like an apartment. Where if it's all forty-five, fifty-year-olds saying that they're gonna stay for the next five to ten years or whatever. Then they might be more looking for like a house, and like that might paint like the way we look at zoning, or even like filling the housing need.
Yeah.
All right, we can um, I've got a couple things, slides coming up that kind of continue to. Tease at this, this issue. So uh the twenty sixteen vision, the vision in the twenty sixteen comp plan is. The city of Tenino is a historic, small community. That grew as a result of natural resource industries such as logging and sandstone quarrying. The community's authentic small-town character with its walkable downtown, built local stone and surrounding natural and working lands. Are key to components that Tenino desires to maintain and emphasize into the future. So that's the vision. The strategies on the next page um that the community sees. Um important to the development are described as preserving the historic character of Tenino, showcasing the industrial character of Tenino. Um emphasizing natural character of Tenino through preservation of views and showcasing existing natural amenities. Um and accentuating the artisan handmade character of Tenino. So a- all four of those strategies are very much. Um historic character, industrial character, natural character, and handmade character. They're all um. Focus a lot on who Tenino believes it is and what their um uh their, their sense of projection. For eh, for what they're hoping to see, other people see them, you know, tourists or residents or, or um business owners or whatever. So was anyone involved in the twenty sixteen comp plan?
I was probably.
Yeah?
I mean, I was, yeah.
Seven years ago?
It was a long time ago, but yes.
Mr. Waterston, were you involved?
On the city council side, that things are.
I don't live here, so.
How does that strike you, at least right now in twenty twenty three?
Kind of catches kind of the still, I feel kind of like it's still the same.
I feel like most people would say that's pretty much the way they feel. I, I think. I feel the same way. I do think it's interesting that, and this is very much, but I do think it's very interesting that all four of them are focused on character. And like.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't necessarily like.
Hey, can you turn your mic on? I don't think, because I don't think there's anybody listening, Mr. Case.
Uh, I just think it's interesting, like, all four are related to character, although they are very broad and encompass a lot of. Like subjects within character. I just think it's interesting that that was.
Character is the word, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, I guess, uh, yeah. Are, are they, are they strategies exactly? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Think it's more ethereal than a strategy, right?
Yeah, cause like a character is hard to like be tangible, but I do understand all of the like points, you know?
Yeah, I feel like they, they wanna keep like the buildings to look the same and, you know, the facade as you drive through the town. But, you know, what type of businesses do we wanna bring in the town maybe is something they're missing, like.
Yeah.
You know, you have a building look very nice during the day, but at night it could be something totally else, and then just kind of stands out different, you know, it doesn't. Necessarily match what the, how the town wants to grow.
Yeah. Well, I feel like community aspect of Tenino is so strong, that it's interesting that like none of these actually talk about like. The people perspective.
People, yeah.
Like, obviously, you can't really control that, cause people move here, but like. But it's interesting that it doesn't really address like the.
A certain type of people with what you have in the town.
Yeah.
That's true.
Or like, you can build a community aspect by having certain, like. Yeah.
So the, the vision is from the entirety of the comp plan. These pers- particular strategies are found at the beginning of the land use section. Um which then goes into a lot of the downtown character, and um the way that Fred wrote it.
Right, right.
It goes into a lot of the downtown character, so that part makes sense to me, that you would lead off on the land use section with. Um these types of character-based strategies.
And that does make sense to me too, now that you said land use, because these are all, yeah, okay, that totally makes sense.
And then when you, when you get into the plan itself, and I pulled it up on my, my phone here, um on a ba- about page twenty-three of the comp plan. They, they talk about great neighborhoods, like the first goal is build excellent neighborhoods throughout Tenino. The second goal is addition of housing units within residential neighborhoods does not detract from the character of existing single-family development. Um and then there's a number of other goals under that particular item. Uh the next kind of group is vital historic business district and non-residential development, and then there's a bunch of goals like that. Um downtown Tenino continues to be the historic and retail center of Tenino. The character of existing historic buildings is retained and celebrated, so those are all kind of goals within, within those. Um and there's a bunch of different ones in there. Um and then in this land use section, there's a section on the master plan community and what the goals of that um west Tenino zone was supposed to be. Which was transportation, infrastructure, land use, park and open spaces, new residential, et cetera. So um the thing about the plan, and I mean, there's, you know, five new planning commissioners and new planners. And new city leadership and new staff, and you, you can, you know, you can tweak this and overhaul it. Revise it as much as, you know, you would need to or choose to, and we would, we would, if you look at the next slide, slide eleven.
When he was talking about, there's, you know, in the vision, there's not, it's all kind of a character. Could there be a vision that, that we? Trying to think how to say it, in some way that we encourage. Human intera- I, this kind of sounds weird, human interactions when our, when we're talking about all these things, that we encourage human. Interaction or something like that, that talks more to the people part of it than just the physical part of it?
Yeah, that's a good, I, I hear what you're saying. Um in the vision statement talks about the, the, the town's character. Uh where you have buildings that are built of stone and natural and working lands that are key components, but it doesn't talk about the people.
Yeah.
So talking about like the, 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 a lot of times in vision statements, they get kind of like. It's a time capsule, like you go into the future thirty years and you pop out, and this is the type of community you see walking around where. You know, people are arm-in-arm, and they're doing festivals, and you know, there's all these kumbaya moments, and you know, everything's safe and walkable. That's, they kind of do the aspirational forward cast of what they would want Tenino to be. So when you, when you project to who you wanna be or how you wanna be, then you have all these goals and policies to try to get there.
Oh, I was gonna say, so, I mean, maybe that would be something like, uh, maybe the focus on that would be like community events, right? And then, you know, somehow you work that into Oregon Trail Days, the tree lighting, like all the different events that we really wanna push for.
I was thinking it could be part of the park element, but then there's like the farmer's market that's not in the parks, so it has to be more than that.
Schools do a lot of events.
Yeah, right. Well, encourage the development of community gathering spaces, that kind of thing, something kind of aid, I guess, but.
But then one of the other things, it's kind of separate from the people that actually live here, is the vision, I, I think. What I see is trying to draw people to our community, to support our businesses. So that would be another kind of part of it, that I would see how, of this vision is how we uh. Encourage people in our community to come to our community and, and, and visit, and. So there's kind of two sides. There's some people that live in the town, and how do we get them engaged? But also the people part of it is what do we do to attract? Cause that's, that's what kind of, uh, you know, I hear everybody talking, this is our tax dollar, you know, that's where we get our revenue is from. People being here, spending money and uh.
And I know like sports programs, uh like the Tenino Youth Football League, I mean, every Saturday you have. From nine until five, you have people from all over Thurston County coming here, the day we have like the farmer's market, so that helps them out, cause. While they're waiting for their game to start, or maybe after the game, they can just roam through town.
Baseball fields, soccer fields, and all those kind of things that can attract people, you know, things that make people wanna come in.
And the more sports stuff we can bring to this town and host here helps that a lot.
I know a lot of the chamber members and the downtown businesses, they're, one of their main concerns that I always hear them talking about is parking issues. Uh they're all very concerned about parking and having availability of parking for people driving through town.
That's part of the downtown plan, cause I, one of our mayor, they exactly, Linda brought that up, was you know, the parking was a, one of the things she bought.
They've been bringing it up.
I mean, yeah, it's been since twenty seventeen, probably, that, you know, that whole thing's been. So, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, things are at odds with each other, so you know, vast fields of parking kind of conflict at the same time with a walkable downtown. So there's, you gotta figure out how to balance those.
Yes.
But we lifted all that, as far as the downtown, and that's all as part of the downtown plan, I mean, that's something we need to review and see if it's still applicable, but uh.
I, and I think, I think Fred did some sort of analysis of like different types of parking, like nose-in and back-in and. Parallel, different types to see what would fit.
Yeah. So it sounds like some, some, a good review of the vision is gonna be warranted.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's turn to the community survey page, slide, um slide number eleven. These are, this is, this is an example. So the, the way we typically put surveys together is I, I try to have them. Fairly short, so I took a survey for city of Tumwater earlier this month. Cause they're updating their comp plan, and I think it was like forty-three questions. And there was a handful of um, of uh multiple choice, and then there were some open field ones, and so. We try to design our, our quiz, our, our surveys in kind of like a Quizlet approach, you know, like where it's like five or six minutes. If someone's spending fifteen or twenty minutes, we're gonna get a significant drop-off. And our survey software will tell us when they drop. And it'll, it'll time it, and I, I can tell how, you know, when people start bailing. So we also use, uh, we try to be pretty graphical with our, with our approach, and so we have maps or pictures. And kind of helping people understand what are these terms are all about. We use a tool called um Alkemer, which is a place-based. Um tool, so you've got a map, uh like an aerial map, um where you can click and circle things that you're con- you know, like, hey, the. There, you know, there's always trash in this alley, or um uh there's sightline distances at the. um, uh, there's sightline distances at this intersection, or this is my path, we can draw pathways, this is how I walk to school, or this is the this is the road I take when my, my road's, uh, blocked by the train, or whatever it is. Um, um, so it's, it's place-based survey data, and we can, we can incorporate that too. That slows the survey down, so sometimes we break the surveys out, and we do a quick and, you know, a quick input survey with, you know, eleven questions, and then we'll do a follow-up survey with people who ask for, you know, a more detailed approach, so. Um, this is an example of kind of what, the types of things we would be asking, things like, you know, what do you, what do you like and what do you don't like over the last five years? Uh, what do you, what'd you like to see in the future? And ha- again, this number three is how well does the current vision statement describe your goals for Tenino, so you 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 all started sort of in at that already. We would, um, I think we would probably vet those questions with you, uh, as the primary advisory committee, we'd bet those with you before we put it out on the survey. So we kinda show you what those ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen questions look like. Um, there's about two thousand people in Tenino, right? Uh, I think a reasonable number back, something I'd be happy with is somewhat, we're in the two to three hundred. Um, that's ten percent, that's quite good for a survey, um, with utility billing, in Pierce County, I got forty-five hundred, and when I did a survey on the base, I got eleven thousand. Your commander can tell you to take a survey, and so that's why we got pretty good results on base. Um, but we tend to emphasize volume, I mean, quality volume, but volume over statistically valid. So statistically valid surveys, if you know very much about them, they're generally pretty expensive because you have to figure out exactly who you're talking to, and they represent a certain person type, and that, that checks a box for their response. So you have to mi- data mine to get to those folks, and most of the time, uh, historically, it's been, um, on phone calls, so it takes somebody on the phone to call them up, and, um, we all have caller ID now, and not a lot of people have landlines, so it gets complicated and expensive, so we just prefer to do a blast. Um, and with these targeted approaches that we talked about, a utility mailer, a QR codes, and, you know, notifications and social media, all these other things, and, um, and I can track at real time how those are coming in. I can do Facebook boosts. We pay for those, they're like a hundred bucks, they're no big deal, that's pretty effective. Um, especially later on, like maybe two-thirds of the way through this, through the, uh, cycle for the survey. Um, I really like the surveys, I I kinda, I try to do it every time we do a comp plan update because we are hearing from people who aren't ordinarily plugged in. You know, and sometimes, uh, we can incentivize that, and so there's ways that we can say we will randomly pick the hundred and fourteenth response, and you're gonna get a twenty-five dollar gift card to something else.
So I was gonna ask about, is there ways and standards we can do, and encourage people to?
Yep, and it would be pretty easy here to do it, you just kinda, I I guess we could pay them in wooden dollars, but, uh, we we could just leave the gift card like a, you know, a I don't know, a gift, a gift card to Don Juan's or whatever, and 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 it would be pretty, you'd come and buy and pick it up, and you take a picture so people know that it wasn't a, a scam and someone actually won something, and you could do that, you could do that twice, usually that works pretty good, like something in the middle and something at the end, and you'll get pretty good responses. So, the intent there being is that we're trying to get as much information back, and, you know, then then as decision-makers, uh, or at least, you know, advisory group here in the planning commission, and then decision at the council, you're, you know, you're making a decisions that seventy-three percent of your, your citizens agreed with, you know, perhaps on some of these, on some of these issues. So, oftentimes in these surveys, you get feedback that says like, what do you expect? Like, you know, I can't find anywhere to live, and I really wish my kids could come back here, but I don't know how that, they're gonna afford a house and, you know, or safe streets, or homelessness, or whatever it is, and and that, that identifies a lot of issues that we wouldn't otherwise hear. So, does that make sense? If there are particular questions you wanna see, you can s- email me or submit those any, any way you want. If there's something you you'd really like to know from the community, but generally, we'll, we'll put together a list and run those all past you.
I'm trying to think, is, does the survey talk about things like, uh, wastewater, like, and emergency services or some of that stuff? Does it talk about in there, talk about that kind of stuff?
So you, I mean, you can have this, we can design the survey however you want. If there's a specific question you want asked, we can, we can do that, um.
I'm just talking about, does it, does the comp plan overall talk about like emergency services?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and that, that's included in the, I thought it talked about power even and those kind of things, huh?
Yeah, there's a utilities element on the, in the comp plan, so it, that's where it talks about, um, if that type of infrastructure, and, um, usually in the capital facilities section is where they talk about, uh, emergency services, so that's where police and fire are co- are coming up, um, library, um, water district, PSC, sometimes.
I think that's a big one, people wanna, I think that's a big one, the people, I hear a lot of people wanting to know about, you know, our sewer, what's going, you know, how that's working, and our emergency services seem to be big issues that are fa- re-faced all the time, they're very expensive, and so I think that's an important, uh, kind of element that, uh, somehow we would, uh, maybe at least have people think, get them to think about it and say, hey, what do you, you know?
Part, part of how I think we should consider designing the survey is what do you wanna, what do you wanna learn, what do you wanna do with the information once you have it? As a, again, and I took the, I took the Thurston County Comp Plan survey, I don't know if any of you saw that here recently, but that was out um, last month as well, cause Thurston County's updating their comp plan. What I don't like doing is answering questions, um, where I don't have to make any judgments, like the Tum, the Tumwater survey, uh, it asked me like, what do I value, and I could choose all, and so I chose all, like, yeah, I like safe streets, I like no traffic, I like open spaces, I like vibrant businesses, I like walkable commu- of course.
I agree.
Yeah, so I don't have any trade-offs, of course I like all those things, and so, what, what, what is that, what is Tumwater gonna do with that information?
Yeah.
Nothing. It's not gonna be valuable, cause everybody's gonna say the same thing. Now, when you say, would you rather?
Right.
Now, you know, and and would you, would you rather have a sales tax increase, or would you rather have a property tax increase? Yeah, that's a hard call, right? And someone's, you're, you're gonna get feedback on that.
So, so probably like, one of the bigger things would probably be somehow explaining that we are gonna take on a heavier density of population, and how do we want to deal with that?
Yes.
Are you into? Because it, it goes right against some of the strategies in the, at the beginning of the land use thing in terms of view sheds and that sort of thing, all those things are gonna be potentially impacted, so if we can get some information about that stuff, I think that would probably be.
So that's part of like an example of how I would preface that with a, let's say, a tenth grade government class, where I'd say the, and we'll talk about it very briefly on the housing allocation, but the county, the, the state and the county are growing. Tenino's gonna pick up some of that growth, the s- the state, uh, demographic gurus are saying we're gonna pick up seven hundred fifty additional people. Um, that's four hundred houses, where should we put those houses? Circle on the map. That's real, right? That's not just like, oh, I like density and, and I'm, I'm in favor of additional units, it's like, oh, but not there, that's my yard.
And then if you're asking people to do that on the map, can you put a big square around West Tenino and just say, not possible?
Uh, well, I would, I would, we would create a map that only shows.
Have a boundary.
Where develop a property is.
So it's like a buildable lands map where yours, you you aren't including wetlands and floodplains and slopes and stuff like that, cause again, I'm asking a question that's not gonna give us.
No, cause everyone's gonna go out there, and it's like, no, we can't, we can't do that.
More like, for instance, with the building up, instead of out, you know, how high do you see Tenino getting? You know, what do you not wanna see? You know, what's the height you're comfortable with?
Right, so that is a lot of times what happens in a workshop setting, so we do a lot of this setup, we, we have a- a- asked survey questions, that gives us initial input. We go back, we draft some plans, and then at some point we come back and we say, hey, here's what we heard, and that's in, in, in like a workshop setting, and people are like, oh no, that's, you know, I know that might have been what we, we, we said, but now that I'm seeing it, that's not what I'm into.
Yeah.
I mean, so you have, you, you can do it in a workshop setting where you roll out a big map, and you have, you know, scaled buildings or other, you know, other, uh, polygons or construction paper that shows, uh, where density or new, new, uh, new zoning could go or new land use type, so yeah, that's, that's exactly right.
That's what we did with the downtown thing, we had some kind of maps out there, and people could actually even put stuff where they thought, you know, they had tables they could go to and put stuff in.
Yeah, there's a lot of different, you've all probably done things like that in the past, uh, and, and again, my bias is don't ask people for their opinion, we're not gonna do anything with it.
Yes.
I mean, it's okay not to, it's okay to hear it and then say, you know, this is why we can't, but don't, don't ask them things that nobody's gonna do anything with, I mean, at least have the piece of their input, and so, let, you know, let's be respectful of their input and their time and, and ask them questions that really are important to the direction of the plan.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I do think the question of, would you rather go up or out, is like kind of important.
Well, and knowing, you know, we don't wanna views on fifth.
Right, and for us with the, with the, uh, the valley and the hills, the question may be, do you wanna go up or down?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. That's true.
But, so, he's talking vertical, are you talking south?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking like down there, I was just joking.
No.
Like basement.
Hey, more parking.
Underground parking.
Underground parking.
Well, uh, you'd have to, you'd have to you, you want an, I mean, democracy's based on an informed population, so you, you don't wanna ask questions where people can't answer unless they have you know, information in front of them, or they're, or they're, you know, spun up on a, on a subject, because for example, if I, if I give them a little piece of cardboard or, you know, like a piece of construction paper that says, this is a five-acre parcel that can accommodate uh, thirty homes, right? Uh, uh, where, you know, where would you like to put this, right, in town? That, that conversation's gonna be most valuable if they know where the infrastructure's at, um, what the, you know, what the, what the critical area might be, um, you know, some of those other things, so you, you have to do a little bit of that, of front-end work in order to get good information from people that really helps, but you can do knee-jerk stuff and it's still interesting, you know, like up or at, you know, up or down. Uh, if you're gonna grow, do you wanna grow north on ninety-nine or south on, you know, Tenino Baccota Road? I mean, those are, those are easy responses, people just give a preference. It might not, it might not be feasible, but you know, it's, it's, it's a judgment. Just don't, don't give them mom and apple pie and think that we're all good, right? That's the part about the Tumwater survey that is frustrating to me, it's like, you know, what do you, you're not gonna do it, there's not, there's nothing in here that's worth my time to answer.
Right, the, the, the point of the survey, the point of all of this interaction is to hopefully gather information that helps us better direct to the council what we think the will of the people is.
Correct, and you craft your development regulations based on that, right? That's again, and, and you budget for that, so hey, the community wants to grow south, right? They said, avoid the hills, avoid the floodplains, don't go farther west cause of gophers, let's grow south. Well, how do we do that? We have to have new zoning, we have to new, new land use designations on county land, we have to eventually annex, we have to extend infrastructure, those are all real. I mean, that's not games, right? That's real money, someone's paying for that.
Would it be too much like if we ask for their opinion on up or out to give information such as if we do decide to go up? You know, a typical area of this size, you know, two-story would cover this many houses, or three-story, three-story would cover this many houses, cause I think a lot of people can't look at a building and comprehend how many people it can actually house, you know, they just, sometimes they look at the height and be like, well, that's too high, I don't want it, but if they realize it can, it can house this many people, and maybe it's not that bad of an idea. Like, is there, is there information we should put in there like that, that just kinda makes them think about those housing needs and?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a good observation, how that sometimes happens is something called a visual preference survey. So I'll show you two types of houses, and you tell me which one you like better. So, um, there's lots and lots of pictures of residential homes, uh, you know, single-family attached, single-family de-tax, um, you know, duplex, triplex, row houses, garden-style apartment complexes, I can show you all these different things, and you basically give me, you know, yes or no all the way through, and at the end of that, I have enough information to say, generally, the community will accommodate, you know, a fourplex, but they don't want a twenty-three fourplex.
Yeah, and ask if that matches the vision, you know, what they like, the historical vision.
Right. Right. And, and, um, so that, that's a very valid approach, and it can provide good information. What I think that that often tells us is people will accommodate density that looks good. So if it's, if it's designed in a way that isn't just like vertical walls with a lid on it, that, that looks like a, you know, plywood skyscraper, then they're gonna say no to that, and, and, uh, but, you know, they would probably say no to a a box that is only accommodating one person compared to a Victorian or a craftsman, right? And which one of these two do you prefer? I like the good-looking one instead of the, you know, but but what if you say the good-looking one's four hundred and fifty, and then, and the, 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 the salt box or whatever, the, the square box is, is one fifty? Now which one are you, you know?
You see, that's what I think is the hard part about this, is you want, like you said, informed decisions or informed comments, but it's, some of the stuff is just like, how do you get the people to kinda understand all these choices that, cause it's, it's very, it's hard for us sometimes, I think,
So.
being here talking about it, but how do you, how do you get the public to understand a lot of those things, so you can really get valuable input that, you know, uh?
So what I would, what I, what we, we could do there is, we could use the survey to identify the biggest.
And the biggest concern.
Concerns, right? And then you say, turns out this up or out, uh, you know, grow up or grow out, you know, uh, is the predominant issue in the community. Maybe we ask for volunteers and you form another little subcommittee, and those are the people who you inform, and then they help you decide. That's completely appropriate, you know, and so that's like, you, you heard from a lot of you that you care about this, there's only seven of us or, you know, five of us on the, on the, on the planning commission, we wanna have a couple of you join us and help us workshop this on this topic, and then you decide, and you, I mean, that is, that's how it's supposed to work.
And have them talk to their friends and neighbors, so they, you know, and get some input from other people too.
Yeah, yeah.
What are some other big issues that you guys think of besides the density issue? Obviously, that's a big one for Tenino, are there any other contentious or looming issues that would be good for a survey question? I mean, I think everyone kind, could kind of agree on some of the things like, you know?
Yeah, I think the other one, like, and I'm gonna say this, and I know, like, I'm gonna, just let me say the whole thing. I think, literally, um, I think the other like contentious thing is like bringing a box store into Tenino. Like, no one's for Walmart, Walmart also won't come to Tenino, no one's for a McDonald's, cause, well, maybe they're for a McDonald's. But like things like that, like, understanding where the community's preference and what businesses come to town also might be interesting to like, try to have an idea, because that also kind of links to like zoning and what kind of like buildings we need to allow, and what buildings we shouldn't allow based on what they want, and things like that.
And so I, I would think that the key is then, I mean, of course, first, we have to identify the vision, and then we have to make sure that our strategies support that.
Yeah, cause I guess if we have a good vision, I mean, no one's gonna look at our vision and be like, oh yeah, maybe I could get my box store in there, I mean, we already have a vision where they're not gonna be allowed, so that vision could kinda help keep some of that out if we don't want it.
Yeah. Yeah, and then it may be one of those where the community says, we don't want Walmart, but like, we'd support a Sher- Sherwin-Williams, or whatever, like weird little niche things that are like a franchise box store, but is still more small, and like, could be more focused on like community still. If things like that make sense. A paint store is an odd example, but yeah.
I see, I know, there's some towns, like historical towns, that have had some small chain type, I mean, but they make them, again, look like part of the community versus a McDonald's with a big sign, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so Matthew, what I'd say to that is, uh, sometimes when we ask that question, you'll get these responses, Trader Joe's, um, yeah, foods, um, bookstore, uh, or, you know, um, uh, you'll get, um.
Starbucks.
Yeah, definitely a bunch of like fran- franchise, uh, fast food places. Let me go back to the McCleary example, um, because that is a, that's a company town, McCleary's got a door factory there, they build custom doors out of, you know, solid, uh, lumber, um, no bar in town. So, um, no bar in town.
No bar.
And that's, that's why I'm. And that's, that's why I'm assuming.
No, that's just because.
We have three.
It's just because.
That's the only, but, like, box stores and fast food places could be in town, that, right, here, I mean, there's nothing keeping them from doing it.
Correct, and you can't, you can't, you can't say, no Starbucks, no, uh, places have tried, um, and
The market, maybe. Right, right.
Sometimes they're successful, sometimes not, so the way you get away from saying, we don't want a Walmart or a Best Buy or a Costco is you have a limit on the size of the buildings that you're allowed in anyone's configuration. So, no one building can be more than, you know, fifty thousand square feet.
And then that business plan is.
Well, and you know that their model is eighty thousand square feet, and so you don't have to worry about that.
Sure, right.
And until they come in and they break their tire center off from, you know, the rest of the, and they, and they work around your code, 'cause I'm, you're smart enough to do that, then you don't have to worry about that.
Right.
And you also don't have to worry about that if you don't have the land for it, if you haven't zoned it, so,
Right, that's what we don't have to.
If you had, I mean, the commercial property zone at Tenino is all downtown, you know, and then there's a couple vacant lots that are commercially zoned across from the grocery store, there's nowhere near enough room for anything over there, so, we've had, we've had franchises who, you know, discount grocery places that open up, uh, their, their stores in small towns all over the, the country, kick tires over there and it didn't, didn't work for them, so, but, you know, that, you wanna, you wanna reflect who you wanna be versus trying to ask people's specific opinions about certain, um, brand names,
That makes sense.
But you can say, like, what do you wish you could do in this community that you can't, can't get right now, it's like, oh, I really wish there was a quilting store, oh, I really wish there was a place I could go to, you know, you know, sand down my, my stone or whatever, I mean, yeah, we got those, you know, both of those, so, you know, you, you, you gotta, you gotta lean into like, what do you wish you could do here? Or what do you drive somewhere else to get that, that you wish you could get here? Those types of things are fun, and you, you're gonna, you're gonna get the Trader Joe's and the, you know, all that stuff anyway.
Yeah.
Did that help a little bit? I mean, that's, okay, 'cause it's a, it's a fair question, um, and it, it does reflect people's interests,
Yes, yeah.
And as you grow as a community, you're gonna have to pay attention to what little sectors are we missing, you know, uh, but for a, a community of this size, Tenino's in a pretty good spot from my, from my perspective doing this in other places. I don't know how they don't have a bar in McCleary, when I figured that out, I'm like, maybe, maybe I should, I'm not a bar guy, I, I can't mix a lot of drinks, but, there's gotta be an opportunity there.
I thought every time they had at least one.
There's an opportunity.
Yeah, it's like five hundred people working shifts, you know?
Yeah, surprising.
What other, what other questions? This is really helpful for me, uh, as I kinda take notes down on the survey stuff.
I don't know, she talked about a little bit about, you know, talked about, do you plan to stay here, or do you plan to, how about questions about what needs do you have as you're getting older to, you know, kind of, what do people need as they age, uh, you know, our population is getting older and older and what, you know, what services, what kind of, you talked about, you know?
Yeah, maybe that's what we do, is we kinda combine the businesses and the services question and just say, like, what, what businesses or services do you seek outside of town that you wish you could seek inside of town?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, what keeps you, 'cause that's what we wanna do, I think, and those kind of things, we wanna keep people in town and spend their money here as much as we can, so what, what kind of things will keep you in our town, or what needs do you have that will keep you in our town?
When we asked the eighth graders at McCleary School about what do they wish they had in town, they wished they had what's called like a third place, like a coffee shop or a subway or a, you know, arcade or, I don't know, whatever, with the, with, you know?
Like somewhere to gather outside.
Yeah, someplace that they can hang out together that wasn't in the middle of the street and it wasn't at the park.
We talked about that all the time, like having a, a place where they could go after a football game and have, and have fun.
That's called a third place? I've never heard that term before.
Yeah, so it used to be like a bowling alley, but libraries can be third places, um, if they, but, you know, the hard part about a library is you're not really allowed to have, you know, boisterous conversations, you know, and brag about your forty-seven yard touchdown run or whatever, so, you know, you, you've gotta have a place where people can gather that's kind of, like, bars aren't even that good because there's a huge, you know, there's stigma and there's, and there's limits about who can go in there, right, so, um, like, uh, some coffee shops or diners end up being third places, 'cause it's just kinda where everybody, like, if you're running for, for office, that's where you go to talk about, you know, issues.
We worked in high maintenance when I was growing up, it was parking lots.
Parking lots?
Yeah. West Side Safeway parking lot, Friday night, that's where it was happening.
The Capitol Mall.
Yep.
Turned a stereo up.
Yep, yep. I mean, that's what we need, we just need a great big parking lot, here's the third place, right?
That's true, even in Minnesota, we always hung out at the park, parking lot, they never closed it there.
Yeah. No, no. With street lights, go all night long.
It's definitely a lot of now, so, you know, a lot of places have that too.
Yep.
Never really in Slurpees.
Anything else? You all jazzed?
I'm excited, does that sound fun?
It is gonna be fun.
You're in the right place.
If we do decide on school involvement, like, like what you did with McCleary, when would you need us to make that decision?
Um, well, I, I would say the best time to reach out to the schools and have that type of event would be in January, I don't think you can do it before then, um, there's just.
So, we'd probably have to get all of them ASAP, so that you're not gonna meet their schedules.
Probably, no, yeah, so, I, I, I think the easiest thing would be if you all started kinda touching your contacts in the school system and I don't know what grade you think would be appropriate, I, I would say, no younger than eighth grade, you know, uh, so eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh.
I'd be in high school, I would think.
I know, I think in high school, if I remember correctly, there's only one history teacher, so like, that would hit the most students, and that would be like.
Do they have like an economics class or anything like that, where it makes you think about?
I know, I know they have a leadership class.
Like, I don't know what the courses are these days, but.
Yeah. Yeah, like, you could do like, like a math class, but like, there's, I think, two or three math teachers, so then it's like, how do you decide what math teacher to go to?
What if the teachers or somebody in the school system can figure out which is the best kind of form to do it, instead of us trying to figure it out?
Yeah, 'cause you could break that up, like land use, you know, give them the map of Tenino and these are, you know, what we see, maybe give that to like a civil, I don't know, do they teach CAD here in high school? Be like, hey, if you wanna get into planning.
Tell me how to math.
Yeah.
So, we should try and come up with some suggestions, uh, on how, on teachers or, and send them to you, would that be helpful, or how do you want us to?
Shoot me an email if you have a contact that, that you've kinda pre-coordinated with, you know, I, hey, I talked to Mr. Anderson and he's, you know, all for it, and I, we can do it that way, that's how we did the McCleary one, um, actually, the principal was on the advisory committee, that helped, but, whatever, however you think would be most successful. So, yeah, we'll get started, I'm excited about this stuff and, um, I think the schedule's an outline, I just would remind you that, you know, it's, it's, the schedule's an outline designed to show how we can make progress, if we need to, you know, take a month here or there to reach out to the kids and have a conversation with them, or we wanna do a secondary, you know, advisory group because we wanna talk about height and density, tho- that's exactly what should happen, so don't let, don't be driven by the schedule, we have plenty of time, we have, we have more time than money, so, you know, we have, we have three years if you need it, and we probably have enough money for one year, so, you know, but if we wanna take a break and come back and, you know, let some things settle out for whatever reason, you can do that too.
So, are we done with that?
Yep.
Discussion, okay. So, new business, countywide housing allocation?
Yeah, so this is a little bit of a, this is a little bit of a preview, I didn't print this out for you, um, I've been attending some housing need allocation meetings with, um, uh, let me see if I should do this or not. Remember when we talked about the, um, the housing allocation, the requirements for low, moderate, extremely low, um, bands, um, for, in the Housing Action Plan? Remember the Housing Action Plan? We talked about, um, having to accommodate s- uh, or look for places, look for, look for, um, opportunities to accommodate, um, certain types of housing, that's the new, the new law, like, so permanent housing and, um, um, permanent supportive housing and, and emergency housing and things like that. So, the, the long range planners in the county have been meeting with TRPC, who's been going through a process to figure out how to allocate, um, those things across the county. Um, Tenino didn't provide any funding to TRPC to help on that work, and Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater and Yelm did, and so TRPC was, uh, uh, courteous enough to invite Tenino to the table to kind of audit and to kind of participate in the conversations, but the actual work product was going to go to those contributing, uh, communities who paid for TRPC to do the work. Um, so I know this is a little abstract, but um, I don't wanna preempt their, their work for those communities, and that's what some of this stuff is, so what I really just wanna do is show Tenino's numbers and not get caught up in Yelms or Tumwaters or Lacy's or Thurston Counties, so, I'm gonna, um, not show you all of this, all of this at the outset, but I do wanna bring it to your attention because I think it's relevant and interesting and, um, it won't, it won't kind of pull the rug out from underneath their feet, so, let me start at the beginning, that we've got affordable housing crisis in the state, the state says, not only do you have to provide for people who are making a hundred percent or a hundred and twenty percent of the annual median income for our region, but you also have to provide for people who are in, um, a lot lower bands, um, I'm trying to find here on the, on the, on the fly, um, this is probably a, a, a good, a good spot to be. So, uh, the need is great across our region, that there's significant need, uh, our median, uh, income for a, a household is a hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars, which is, um, but that's a household, so that's, you know,
Oh, for two people.
The two, right, two people put together, or one and a half, or whatever it ends up being, and so this is, this is our current supply and these are, that's a future need for a, you know, twenty forty-five ter- uh, forecast year. Um, so you with me so far, we've got a hundred and twenty-one thousand homes, and we need another fifty-four thousand homes in our area, and so, out of that additional fifty-four thousand homes, what, uh, what cost of homes do we need to provide in order to meet the need? Does that make sense? So that orange shows, uh, the blue shows what we have, and the orange shows what we need to grow, so, what do you notice just by looking at this off the, off the top, just some high, you know, anybody's shot out a, a, an observation?
High end.
Yep, so there's a, there's a significant need for a hundred and twenty percent AMI, um, so, you know, we need homes. If we have a hundred and twenty-one and we need fifty-four thousand more, I mean, that's a significant increase, right? That's a, that's a lot of homes we need, so that, that, that's the observation is we need home across all the brackets.
What I catch is, uh, surprises me is that of the homes we have.
This is across the county, by the way, as I think is, you know?
The fifty to eighty, I'm surprised that we have that many homes for that income group, uh, I think it'd be just ops, I think there'd be fewer homes available for that income group, just from my experience on rent costs and those kinda things, it seems like people making those, that amount of income really struggle to find housing. But, we got quite a few numbers wise, it looks like.
How do they generate these numbers, like, I mean, we need homes for, we have hu- you know, that many homes for the fifty to eighty percent AMI, but what is that based on? Like, how do they know how many homes we have for those people, just because those, that's the income of the population that exists and they assume that they can afford to live in wherever they are living right now?
Yeah, so you're, you're asking, um, a very good question, a fundamental question about how they did the data, and, um, that's why this slide deck is twenty-nine slides, is to show you how they did the data.
Oh, sorry.
The quick, the quick answer of that is, um, your housing is not supposed to be more than thirty percent of your income.
Ah.
So, if you're making a hundred and two thousand, let's just say that's about thirty-one thousand dollars, and you're supposed to be spending on housing, which is about twenty-five hundred dollars a month. If you're spending more than that on all your housing, you start hitting those bands.
But, but, like, a lot of people could afford their house like ten years ago, but wouldn't be able to buy their house new now, maybe necessarily, so doesn't that kinda mess that up a little bit? Um, I mean, yeah, it works now because I bought my house fifteen years ago and my mortgage is like a fifteen year ago, you know, rate and, you know, size, but if I was gonna buy the exact same house today, it'd cost like twice as much.
Well, even in three years, you know, I bought my house about three years ago and I couldn't afford it today.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So, would those be the people that are captured in the blue? No, probably not.
That's what I'm, that's what I don't understand.
Right, like, maybe the ones that are already taken care of and we're just now looking at the ones who aren't.
And then how many people are living in those like states of one bedroom?
'Cause if you're in that fifty to eighty percent group and you're living in a house that you could afford fifteen years ago, it's not like you could
It's a fourteen.
move to the same comparable house in the same area probably, and still be in that income group.
Well, and when they say house, do they truly mean like you own that house, or like you are in an apartment?
Um, because if it's an apartment, that's like so much different than a house. Yeah, there's like nine questions in there, so I think you're, to answer your question, uh, my understanding of household is, um, all of the people in the house, whether they're in the unit, whether they're related or not, and they talk about, um, residential units and not necessarily, um, houses, so they're not distinguishing necessarily from uh, one house tied to another.
From a rental to a mortgage.
Uh.
From an apartment to a house is the same.
Multi-family, is that all included?
They are, they are looking at it on a unit basis, based on how much it would cost to, you know, what, what band you fall in, so here's another slide, like, what percent of area median income would it take to be able to afford homes in this, eh, you know, in this thing, so, it's a, it's a relationship between house price or, you know, residential unit price and income, and those, those are the two primary drivers of, uh, where we see the demand and the need to be. Now, um, you are all identifying exactly what I brought up in the meeting, which is, this is a moving, we tried not to use the word target, but this is a moving assessment, like the area median income, it's one oh two this year, it might be one oh four next year, it's gonna be one oh five or one oh nine the year after that, so how will we ever know if we're, if, if we're getting to where we need to get? And so, that's highly complicated, it's a fair criticism, and the legislature is just saying, you need to do better. That's basically what they're saying, you need to plan for and you need to see how you're accommodating these, so you need to do better. So it's a, it's a start, I don't, right now, there's no, uh, heavy-handed approach to it, but, but if a community like blows it off and says, if we're not gonna even allow these things, or not gonna try, or not gonna have any goals in our housing plan to talk about how to accommodate, um, you know, extremely low income individuals, then you, you potentially are looking at being in violation of the Growth Management Act and could, you know, risk a, a lawsuit or a challenge at the Growth Management Hearing Board, and then be found in non-compliance, which means you got a bunch of like rent issues at that point, and you be, be har- have a hard, hard time, so, I, um, I, I, I wanted just to basically jump to, uh, what the deal with Tenino is, um, and then, after the other jurisdictions that paid for this work, roll this out, 'cause I think I'm probably the first one, 'cause, I, I, well, what I, what I did is I noticed a date on that.
Sure, I, I thought.
That's funny, 'cause I saw that, I was like, wait a minute.
Um, but I can share it with you because, uh, we are, um,
Public meeting?
Well, yeah, it's a public meeting and if anyone wants. Well, yeah, it's a public meeting, and if anyone wants to grab it, they could probably grab it. But, um, what I, what I wanted to show you is that Tenino, particularly in this zero to fifty, is, is doing fine. So there's very.
Be. Not, and I feel like that makes sense from knowing the county, cause like this is very much a bedroom community, so like there aren't like apartments here. So like you're not even necessarily getting the people who like, like you're not getting the me's who work for the federal government and make pennies. Because I have to live in an apartment, and there's not really apartments for me to live in Tenino. So I feel like that makes sense, that we're doing good on like the lower end because we don't really.
People aren't here, live here, cause they, yeah.
Yeah, we can't facilitate it.
Yeah.
Alright, so I think this is probably the easiest way. So you see Tenino in the middle there, and I know you're probably, I mean, this is mostly only gonna be important to planners. Um, so, uh, the rest of the, the rest of the data is kinda, those other jurisdictions are gonna pay attention to that. But Tenino has, um, uh, twelve-hundred-and-ninety-nine units within its city and fourteen in the UGA. This is saying, over the next twenty-two years, so by twenty forty-five, we need to accommodate, um, thirty-two permanent supportive houses and ninety-seven non-permanent supportive houses. And so that ninety-seven, uh, uh, so the, 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 uh, the rest of that twelve-ninety-nine number is coming in, um, at two-eleven, four-sixteen, one-ninety-seven, one-thirteen, two-thirty-three. So you see how our growth here, is it showing up on this? This is, this is our growth number, right? Is that showing up? No.
No.
So that, you, you do see that twelve, the twelve-ninety-nine number?
Yeah.
That's our growth number, our, our housing growth over until twenty forty-five.
That's a total we need to add, or is that total houses we need?
We, so we need to add a thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-eight houses?
Units.
Units?
Is that right?
Over that.
Yes, tools. See the top, it says method C, which is beside the point. Total housing unit need. Till twenty forty-five. Now, our Housing Action Plan didn't go that far out, so that's why it's a bigger number.
So it's more, I think that's a lot more than I remember talking about.
Yeah, so our housing number did, cause our housing number was based on twenty-twenty numbers, and so it's a twenty-forty housing plan. So by twenty forty-five, another five years, they're saying twelve-ninety-nine. And out of that twelve-ninety-nine, um, you need two-hundred-and-thirty-three at one-twenty, you need a hundred-and-thirteen at a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty, one-ninety-seven at eighty to one-hundred, um, and, uh, and four-sixteen. So, um, I think this, I think this is the map that we ended up on.
We need a lot more land.
So now, so that's the housing need.
Can always go down.
So now, it's interesting though, because tho- those are housing units. Housing unit could be a studio, or a housing unit could be a five-bedroom home. But then is that where you kinda think that the housing style is reflected by the income? Look, does that make sense? Like if you're a plus hundred-and-twenty percent, would those houses be more representative of like a four-bedroom or a five-bedroom house? Whereas maybe your, you know, thirty to fifty percent would be like a one-bedroom?
Yeah, I would think so.
When, uh, once you bring it down, I think, I think what you're saying is it's hard to build inexpensive, large and inexpensive units. Like it's hard to build an affordable four-bedroom apartment complex.
Right.
So.
But, and then, and then also the other weird thing too is, is that like units doesn't necessarily represent density.
Um, bedrooms don't really represent den- density, but units would. So if I build a, a six-unit apartment complex, that's six units per, for a third of an acre, whatever size I'm on. Now, those six units could be single-bedroom units, or they could be three-bedroom units. I don't get extra credit, and it's not counted in here, whether that's eighteen rooms or six rooms.
Right, so it's just doors.
Oh. Yeah.
How do you feel like?
Cause it's households, it's household-based. It's not, I don't know, I don't technically know how you're gonna use those three bedrooms. You might have a room for your cat, and a room for your goldfish, and then a room for your mother-in-law, and then your own bedroom. Those are three things I'm not too fond of. I like my mother-in-law.
On video.
A lot. That'll be a Thanksgiving.
And that's why you have an extra room for them.
So.
So, so there's no consideration of somebody who is in the thirty to fifty percent. If, like, you could supply people in that thirty to fifty percent with a bunch of one-bedroom or studio apartments in one giant complex. I'm just like exaggerating.
Yeah.
And you don't have to consider that they may wanna get married and have families and, and live a life at that percentage.
Yeah, that's how, how do you figure it out?
Right, like.
And then you know, it's kinda like.
You would never be able to.
But then, yeah, but then I also think it's interesting, like the exact opposite, like you're not necessarily calculating like a four-bedroom rental unit as like a household for four people. Cause like, you can have an apartment complex with four people, or you could have a four-bedroom with the cat, the dog, and the, like, there's no.
Right, there's no relationship between the. There's no correlation between actual density and the units.
Yeah, which like is fair, because it's hard to determine how you're gonna use those.
Totally.
But eh, you feel like it's also important. Yeah, it's like the logical next step is to like calculate how many bedrooms are needed for how many people. But then you have a whole another very in-depth conversation about.
Yeah, I think, so, um, I wanna show this because, uh, we're going into the housing piece, and once this gets rolled out at, you know, the TRPC level, it'll be a talking point. My main talking point was, Tenino doesn't have to do a ton. Um, our existing housing stock already ch- checks a lot of the boxes on those bands. The zero to thirty, the third, the thirty to fifty, fifty, eighty, eighty to a hundred. The housing stock in Tenino, if you remember from the Housing Action Plan, is generally of a size and a condition and an age that lends it to be more affordable than many other spots in the county. And we have fewer new homes than, uh, other places in the county. And so we've already met our allocation for some of these bands.
So we're in a good spot, which is why if we can make some changes or tweaks now to help things down the road, we are actually in a much better spot.
Get in front of.
Just thinking, right, and thinking we're good, we can just hang out and then go on later on.
Nobody's good.
Nobody's good.
Is the key, is, that's a key.
We're just not as bad.
Correct.
But, so, but it's an opportunity to progress.
I think what you're gonna see is you're gonna see the other cities in the county, and the county itself make si- serious, uh, policy, language, uh, inputs into their comp plans to try to deal with the issues that we're in that. And we can in December or January talk more in detail about where they're at, once they roll their numbers out. But when you're growing as fast as Yelm is growing, and has as much growth as Yelm is projected to grow, and has as few existing units in the zero to thirty, thirty, fifty, fifty, eighty bands, you have more to make up.
Yeah, that's a huge.
Because you, you are, you are not, uh, fully, you haven't already kind of captured your fair share. Because most of the housing stock in Yelm is new, and most of it's detached, single-family and/or new apartment complexes. And so they don't have a lot for someone who's making fifty percent or se- sixty percent of that hundred and two, right? So who, where does someone who makes sixty grand rent?
So you know, and that would be an interesting thing, like, I think.
They can rent, they just have to pay more than thirty percent of their income.
And I think of something like Dupont. I mean, Dupont was basically a city that was almost created, right? So that would also probably be a problem that they're at too. I mean, if you have a sudden huge influx, that's gonna lead you.
Right, when you, when you don't have a base, uh, uh, number, when you don't have much in the way of housing stock in those bands, you have more ground to make up because you still have an allocation. And so because the, the way the model was, is being proposed is everyone gets an allocation based on their population. So if you're thirty percent of the county's size, because you're, um, Lacey, uh, you have to take, you're, you're, you're expected to take thirty percent of the allocation for these housing, uh, numbers, including fifty to eighty and eighty to a hundred. And, and the way, and then the next step is, eh, if everyone's taking their percentage, you know, Tenino takes our eight percent, and Yelm takes their fourteen percent, and Rainier takes their seven percent, and whatever the numbers are across the board. Um, and you have one percent of that particular, uh, housing stock, and you're supposed to grow at fourteen percent.
Sure.
Well, now you have a thirteen percent delta that you gotta make up.
That you better just figure out, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and, and so, again, I wanted to bring that and say, we're, we're not, eh, in as, uh, dire of a situation because a good amount of the housing stock in Tenino already is in these situations. And be aware that the rest of the s- the county is going to be looking for ways to find, uh, housing, to, to promote housing that meets and matches up with these allocations. And at the end of the day, cities can only do what cities can do, and they can't, and, uh, and they ordinarily don't build houses and housing stock. So how do they then incentivize or promote houses that are selling for a hundred and eighty or two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars? When the going market rate is four fifty?
Yeah.
How do they do that? So that's the rub. This is an exercise designed to shine a light on the fact that there's not enough. And now what are you gonna do about it? That's the, that's the question.
It's a tough one.
Yes. Alright, I better stop. Before I get in trouble.
Okay, I see on here, uh, motion to cancel the December meeting. Is that something that you wanna do?
Um, I would, I would propose that we postpone the decision to po- to cancel the meeting until.
Closer to.
Closer to the meeting.
That makes.
Perhaps leave it open as a, as a possibility, but right now, there's plenty of things we could bring before you, including what I was gonna say at the beginning of the meeting. We have a request for a, a text change to the zoning code to allow for certain types of activities at the Ag Park property, which is zone public, semi-public. Um, uh, so the Ag Park property over in, in, you know, by the wastewater treatment plant has land at the south of the spot that's currently being developed that is being, um, thought for, uh, additional types of uses, and the zoning code currently doesn't allow those uses. So we're being asked to create a zone change and some performance standards and text that would go into the development code. And I might, I might bring that before you in December.
So like a pro- a different parcel that's to the south of?
Same, same, well.
Oh, there's like three parcels or four parcels?
The property is short-platted into, into five.
Five.
Or so it wasn't short, but it was divided into five. And so the, the remaining parcels that aren't being built on, uh, not the parcel with the building and not the corner parcel, but the other three parcels, um, have a potential for a use, a, 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 a new.
What is it?
A, a use that, I don't wanna tell you yet.
So I have.
Am I gonna be upset?
I don't know. That's what we'll talk about in December, in the season of giving.
I see.
So how, how was the Ag Park able to build in that area?
Cause the zone got changed.
What do you mean?
Well, so we've got West Tenino that is covered with pocket gophers.
Yeah, so there were no, there were no pocket gophers on the Ag Park site.
Oh, okay.
We did a, SEJ did a full transect, um, of that in twenty, I wanna say, um, twenty eighteen maybe? Um, during this, during the survey season, and, um, no, no pocket gophers.
Awesome.
Now, there is, there is a, there is a prairie habitat reserve parcel that's part of a conservation easement, and that part hasn't been slated for development.
That predated the listing of pocket gophers, so it just talks about prairie species generically, kinda?
It's a six-acre parcel that's very generic, and.
Covered with scotch.
Yeah, now it's covered in Scotch broom, and it probably doesn't have much in the way of star asters or the things that they were trying to preserve back in the day. That was a twenty.
If it ever did.
Was that, was that like a oh-seven?
It was part of the wastewater treatment plant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably oh-seven.
Because they used federal dollars for the, for the wastewater treatment plant, so there was a nexus to do species, uh, check. So I, I may need to bring that back to you in December, um, if it continues to move forward. Right now, there's, you know, we're working through some of the draft language to see if we can overcome some of the hurdles for some of the, the impacts. So that's what I had.
It's not really, I'm very kind of passing on the agenda, but can you, uh, fill us in on what's going on with the housing plan? Has that been sent to the, to the, uh?
Yes, the hous- the housing plan was sent to council in, I wanna say at their final December meeting, maybe the twenty-seventh was the right date. I could maybe have Courtney look at it.
Yeah, we don't.
Uh, September.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said December.
So after we, after you recommend, made a recommendation of do pass, uh, I took it to the planning, to the city council, made a presentation, and it, uh, passed on a three-two vote. So the mayor had to break the tie. It was a two-two. Yeah, it was a two-two tie, cause one of the council members wasn't in attendance. And so it was a two yes, two no, and mayor broke the tie with a yes vote.
What was, what were the dissenting opinions about, where?
Um, I, I believe one of the council members had no comment and voted no, and the other council member, Mr. Callahan, uh, had comments and voted no, and you can watch his stuff.
Watch it all, yeah?
Yeah.
Was it September that it was presented?
I think it was Sept-
September twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
September twenty-sixth.
It's pretty good, like if one day.
Not bad.
Yeah, so December twenty-sixth, they, they adopted, and we sent the resolu- the adopting resolution to commerce, so we're good.
Okay.
Do you believe we still need a motion if you guys are?
We're not gonna do it right now.
What was that?
So I think there needs to be a motion to postpone or decline.
Which one?
For that.
We're not gonna take any action on it until we get like right before the meeting, just in case we are actually gonna meet.
We'll do it later.
At this point, I would say they're probably going to meet.
I think it's a good idea if we can meet.
I would say that there's a better than fifty percent chance you can meet.
I was one-hundred percent committed to meeting in December until I saw this and checked.
And then you're like, ooh, I could get down with that.
Okay, that sounds good. So, alright, with that, I will say, meeting adjourned.
I pulled up that, that presentation, I'm like, oh. Nobody watches this in the next.
Nobody's. You want these back, you want, you still. I was just gonna recycle these if you don't need them for anything.
I don't know, maybe, maybe.
Do you want any of these?